New Jersey, at 1916 was provided on January 9, 2019 by City District News and Star Ledger, posting on the website of both the board and municipal buildings to file with the township clerk for a call.
Captain Gugella, Captain Deroso, Captain Rose, it's the Vice President of Dallas, President Eddie.
Here. Please join me in Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the July of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, and that we are ready to be adjusted strong. He is convinced for approval. August 19th is September 5th. Have a motion on that. Go to the minutes. Do you want to second them? All second them? Okay, all second them, all in favor? Aye. Count, Councilor.
Um, I'd like to start off with some incredibly good news, although I don't know if it's officially out there. Um, the township was awarded $250,000 per gram for land importance, for the land importance on the house. And that's significant because the county doesn't usually give out that kind of money in one year, but they have obviously demonstrated their commitment to that property. So, I'm very excited about that. It's absolutely wonderful news. There's a lot of dancing, a lot of talking on that. I got that phone call.
I attended the September 11 ceremony here at the township, also attended the launching of Bridgewater Lifestyle Magazine on the 25th. It was an interesting evening, and I wish the owners much success as they move it forward. Attended the Martin's Community Center for a festival, walking the booth for the Friends of Bridgewater History. Also had a church committee meeting that I attended in September as well. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Captain Markell.
Thank you. I attended the Sanapi Annual Open House at their 55 corporate drive location, which was jointly sponsored by a business partnership. Sanapi has invested millions of dollars in operating this facility, which continues to house a small RV with. On September 23rd, the planning board heard three hours and 20 minutes of testimony on the Center of Excellence. The fourth room was standing remotely with open TV coverage from adjacent conference room. The project was carried until Monday, October 28th. On September 25th, attended the quarterly Somerset County Planning Forum, the main speaker were people with representatives from the Energy Council who talked about conservative energy. Excuse me, the Somerset County Open Park will host a free blue shot clinic at Patriots Stadium in Parkin Lot on October 19th for Monday afternoon. Attended the monthly ELC meeting where representatives from DEPTO, the New Brunswick Government Corporation spoke about creator financing for the town's projects. Corporation also pointed responsibility for $30,000 for different state projects in the Bronx area. The new parameters for mail-in ballots is totally knowing the brief, legally mandated that anyone who used an absentee ballot in 2017, 18, or 19 will now get a mail ballot. Residents are getting ballots as a mail and not reactive. Attended the Somerset County Alliance Reaction Meeting where representatives of RBC spoke on their hands-on training program. Tisconia, PSC, and Dean, Carol Bianchi from Jason PNC spoke on plans and liability. And county is going to be here, Matt, we'll discuss how we'd like to be.
Thank you. Alan Deroso, thank you for your time today.
For my report, I just wanted to take a few minutes, talk briefly. We have Tom Brandt here from the Golden Quarry, and David Pagli is here. I wanted to just address the blast that occurred a few weeks ago with regard to concern with my parents' schools. So, either one of you gentlemen, if you mind, both of you come up and if you wouldn't mind just providing us with a brief background in terms of the last issue and what's been done, what the status is.
Thank you for having me here tonight. We're always willing to come and discuss our operations with the quarry at any time. At this juncture, as Council President Menace had mentioned, on November, on September 13th, a construction materials blast occurred at 10:15 a.m. in the quarry. And I'm reading directly, I'm sorry, from a statement that was provided by the New Jersey Department of Labor Inspector John Jordan, who oversees the blasting of our quarry and ensures that we're compliant with all the standards that are established by the state of New Jersey. So, being that I was not in the state on that date, I'm relying on his information for what he provided me as to the investigation that he had gone through as part of this investigation. So, as I was saying, at approximately 10:15, there was a shot that was executed in the quarry. He was contacted by one of our own employees, Juan Berio, who's our supervisor, advising that they had gotten a call from Somerset County Police Department. The police were indicating that there had been an issue in the local school, Bridge Water Barrack Middle School, and that there was a belief that there was issues that were caused by the blast in the quarry. John Jordan went to the school and had conversations. Well, let me explain what happened. I guess the situation was that at the given moment when the shot was executed, there were children on the playground in the middle school who heard the blast, heard the noise, as we call it, the air overpressure noise. And at that time, there was a wind gust which blew dust from an adjoining area of the school that was under construction. Essentially, I believe there was earthwork being done for the improvements of the track. I guess people hearing the blast and also witnessing the dust coming off of the, obviously they didn't understand where the dust was coming from. But I guess the concern was that there must have been the dust originating from the quarry that caused that to occur. That was found not to be the case. Again, he states that at the quarry site at approximately 11:15, he was contacted, or he contacted two chitmills of the township, who then said that there were children outside in gym class and had heard the blast, and someone reported that there was an explosion that was classified as a suspicious incident by the Bridge Water Police. Now, I think most everybody knows that prior to a shot on a given day, anybody that wants to be included on the call list can be notified of a shot or a blast. And certainly, the police department is notified on every event that there will be a shot that day. Apparently, it was not an understanding by way of that call coming in that it could have been the shot from the quarry. That was what the police were being advised of. So, that essentially started an investigation by the police department in the local area to determine what actually had occurred. He goes on to say that John Jordan and Barry Kraft, his supervisor, arrived at the Bridge Water Barrack in the middle school and requested to speak to someone of authority. He goes on to say that they met with Assistant Principal Jacqueline Luffrady, who stated that the dust cloud that affected the students originated from a construction site near where the students were outside for gym class. This construction site is on school property and is a rebuilding of an athletic track adjacent to the athletic fields. So, again, the school being approximately 3,900 feet away from the blast site and having no other complaints between that point and where the area where the blast was conducted, we even want to believe that these are two separate incidents, that there was not any connection between the actual shot in the quarry and the dust that originated from the athletic fields nearby.
Let me ask you a couple of quick follow-up questions. Mr. Taggert, please feel free to jump in or fire my name, just so I'm clear. First of all, the shot in question, was it in compliance with the standards?
It was, it was two decibels louder than what the maximum loud was. So, the standard in New Jersey for air blast is 130 decibels. It was measured at 132 decibels at Haley Court. And I might add that in that same area where the blast took place, there had been two prior events several weeks earlier, conducted by the same contractor and using the same methodology that did not create any issues or violations of the standards. Yes, it was two decibels louder than what the standard requires.
What happens when it's outside, when it's two decimal louder, what happens? What actions are not heard?
Well, essentially, the state of New Jersey will take the readings that were provided by the contractor. It's self-reported, and they will issue a violation to the contractor for not having followed the regulations, or essentially, he will be called down to a hearing to demonstrate, to, I guess, the satisfaction or unsatisfaction of the Department of Labor to understand whether this was a preventable, you know, issue, or whether it was not explained, or maybe it was a anomaly that couldn't be explained. But it is the contractor's responsibility, being licensed in New Jersey, to comply with the standards or setting.
What kind of moderate do, does the party do, is that sure?
The contractor, again, is responsible to monitor the closest occupied structure, not only by the quarry. And when I say monitor, that includes the measurement of what we call ground vibration or peak particle velocity, PDB, and also the noise that we call it, the air overpressure. That's the sound you hear when that shot is exerted, or the energy is exerted. Now, that can be affected by a number of ways, a number of issues. Weather has a certain effect on that measurement. If you have a low cloud ceiling, that will hold the energy downward and not let it go vertically as it would normally. And also, other weather conditions, if it's a rainy day or a rain event, that would also have an effect. But essentially, the contractor has issued a violation for having exceeding the air blast level of 130 by two decibels. And he has the rights to appeal, you know, he can have his instrument evaluated to know that it was reading correctly or if it is utilized.
Have, how many shots have you been doing?
On an average year, we will have done approximately 55 to 60 shots over the year. This year's been an extremely busy year. We are blasting at least twice a week during the construction season, but overall, answering your question, it's about 55 shots a year.
Have, of those, of the shots that occurred this year, how many have had exceeded decibels?
This is the first time in this year, and I think there hasn't been any violations in the past four years from other areas.
Does the quarry continue to use the same contractor?
We use.
If I remember correctly, it's a different, this particular contractor hasn't been on the quarry.
Correct. This one, the company is named Silver Valley. It's a smaller type contractor utilized in construction work. The primary contractor that we use is Mallard Scott. You've actually seen a representative of their company here on certain occasions before during our licensing. But yes, he was, he was a different contractor that will be primarily used, but because of the need to extract rock in the schedule that we are, we will have one contractor working in one area of the quarry and we'll have another contractor working in the second area.
Is there, is there anything that the quarry has done, or could do, or needs to do in order to make sure that the blast is moving forward? I understand that it's, the contractor has the penalty, a potential penalty for this one. Is there any operational changes that contractors and all the things they made in terms of thinking of what happened?
Absolutely. You know, these shots as designed, they can be on the order of 30 to 50 holes, and it's all designed in a specific pattern to be able to minimize the effect, as we call it, from a blast. So, that will be looked at to understand what can be done to not have this happen again. As I said earlier, there were two other shots in this exact same area with the same methodology that did not have issues. It just happened to be so that this one then caused the air blast to be exceeded by two decibels.
Do you know that the school district, or the middle school specifically, is on the distribution list for the blasts?
I'm not aware of that, but certainly, we, as we always do, offer that opportunity for any school or owner to be on the list.
Would it be possible for somebody from the Golden to reach out to the school to just make sure that they're aware in terms of getting on the, make sure where the information, if they're on the list, if they have an opportunity to do that?
Sure.
Last question for it, answer, if I have any questions, but from a public communications standpoint, what's the best way, and this is for Mr. Taggert as well, when something like this occurs, you know, we get a lot of, in this instance, of course, it involves people, the children, you have the school issue involved, so there's a heightened concern from the public. It's not just a matter of, does the blast, do people like it or don't like it, and are there issues? But what's the best way for the public to get information on an event like this where there's a concern about the blast? Does that come, the township, is that from the Golden, is that from the state? Where should we be directing our residents, or where should the township be getting its information from to disseminate to the public?
I would say that that's going to depend on what the question is. The township is aware every time there's a blast. We do log complaints, and we do get a report when the blasting is done, but we also don't have anybody on-site, because it's state jurisdiction. So, a lot of the information we're getting second-hand from the quarry or from John Jordan, who, I mean, well, are a business.
Well, I guess one of my concerns, and maybe we can, we can take this offline at some point with, with Mr. Taggert's back, is in this instance, you know, there was obviously concern by parents who were hearing things, you know, with social media, text messages, everything else, word spreads very quickly, so now they're starting to become panicked. People have, you know, only pieces of information, and of course, that causes more concern. I want to make sure that, to this extent, that there's any, ever any issue moving forward at that verdict of concern, so we figure out what the right method is so that the township can either be in place to disseminate information as to whether the blast is excellent, is occurring, or directed to the appropriate person at the state or, or at the Golden, wherever the right contact would be.
The public, the residents should just contact my office. We generally know exactly what's going on. Now, this was a situation where there was a lot of conflicting reports.
Right.
And really didn't have any concrete knowledge until I personally spoke with John Jordan about a week and a half ago, where he relayed this report to me verbally, but we, not one of us had this info today.
I guess it was hard, but my concern would be, you know, residents contacting your office is great, but I want to make sure that we're also proactive in making sure. I don't know how good we, I don't have in front of me what, if anything, the police department put out with regards to the state.
Oh, the police department put out an episode.
I think they did it on February 15th.
No, it was very good.
All right, good. But I want to make sure that the public gets the information, a lot of people have questions.
And that was relayed through Facebook as well.
Yeah. So, I want to follow up with people about that, in terms of, there's a way of.
I can look up exactly when they did.
Yeah, it's more matter of moving forward, not necessarily a matter of, you know, figuring out that when we posted it forward, but making sure that, you know, if people had follow-up issues, you know, questions, I got a lot of questions, I wasn't going to cancel them. I want to make sure we can find out the right method for communicating that, not just a piece of information.
Or absolutely, put something out as an email blast or a baseball blast.
Maybe, and we can, I don't have any further questions. Hey, Councilor, any questions?
I could just comment, follow up to your comment, Matt, Matt, is that the police need to make sure that when they're posting the information, the information is correct? Because they said it was from the blast in the quarry, and clearly it wasn't. And that just helped to spiral things, so to your point, the way in which we make sure that the information that goes out is the accurate information. Clearly, they had that in the middle school. That wasn't shared.
I can tell you that that, that was how I learned of it, was through the police, because usually, chip is the one who gets warned of the blast. I don't really need to know. But my Facebook popped up that, that pixel reported, so I went right to chips, what's going on? And that, we started investigating, right?
In the course of, you know, in the course of all the blasts that have taken place, there's very few with any, I wouldn't say many, but very few that have issues. But obviously, given the proximity in the middle school, and in this instance, the school kids are a little concerned, obviously raising the heightened concern. So, I don't think there's going to be problems in the future, but I do want to make sure that internally, we have some sort of, we've established a standard already, which is going to be for communicating with any residents about questions about blasts, and it's not just left for residents to kind of figure out. And of course, with this issue, it's a little bit of, you have township, you have state, you have the Golden, you have the contractors, there's a lot of different pieces that have parts of the information, so I don't think their residents should have to. They should be one stop that they can go to to get some information we got from the state, or that's on us, the police department, or the Golden, or should work.
I think ultimately, honestly, that would be on us.
I think so too.
When we hid from the state, which was the.
Yeah, I think so too. So, I want to make sure.
Any questions from the quarry?
I appreciate it, Frank, coming in today. The Golden has been my experience, Council, the Golden's tried to be a good resident, good business, and is always cooperative in every way that they need to do, we need it. So, thanks for coming.
How many, great. Couple of questions.
First of all, thank you for being here. Like my fellow council members, I appreciate certainly your companies working in stories, to be cooperative, and to have great communication with the township. Just a couple of questions. How do we know, how do we know for sure that that dust came from the construction area at the high school? How was that concluded?
Again, I was not here on that day, so I was unable to minister, go and follow up on that. But I believe that from the statements of the school administrator, as I mentioned earlier, Jacqueline Luffrady, who stated that the dust cloud that affected the students originated from a construction site near where the students were outside for gym class. This construction site on a school property and is a rebuilding of the athletic track. So, that was really the best information we had. Plus, the fact that at 3,900 feet away and with no other complaints in between would suggest that the dust didn't come from the quarry.
What's a, I know you said that you have a 55 blast per year. What's the typical blast? What's the typical decibel level of the blast?
Approximately 115, 115 to 121.
From my understanding, from recalling high school physics, I went to Bridge Water Barrack in high school, so I have good physics teachers, is that the decibel scale is logarithmic, right? So, it magnifies, I guess it doubles by every, every decibel, I mean, three decibels?
Square distance.
So, the two-decibel increase over the 130 is actually almost a two-fold sound perception. Like, I think in three decibels, it doubles.
I wouldn't say it's twice the, well, you know, but I would agree with you, it's on an exponential logarithmic scale, the dust.
All right, so it seems like, you know, the school, and the kids that heard this, obviously had some reason for concern, like they probably was much louder than they were accustomed to. And so, I guess it did trigger some alarm. Do you know if the middle school is on your call log? Do they get a phone call?
I don't know that I've mentioned it, been asked that by Council President Menace. I'm not aware of that. Certainly, I will take, I will make the effort to contact them and offer that to the situation.
Oh, it should be. All right, Frank? Well, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Please, you know, let's station, discussion, and the public, do you have a motion?
Sir.
All in favor? Aye. Members of the public, which should address the council in any manner, will be allowed to speak unless a review for attempt. Who come forward to the microphone, your name and address to the record, and you have two minutes.
Tim, you're in 17 Montheroe. I'd like to ask the council what their thoughts on broadcasting council meetings. Recently attended the planning board meeting, and as Councilman Nury Ellis mentioned, it is reported, it was a standing remotely crowd, and I noticed that the county had the ability to take what was going on in this room and broadcast it to monitors both in the hallway and the adjoining conference room. So, it seems there's a, there's a good foundation there to be able to take that technology and expand it, whether it's partnering with the TV station at the high school, or recording it and uploading it on, some opportunity there to put that in place over the next couple of months.
Yeah, I think we're in agreement, and we're exploring that opportunity.
I like the idea, because I think at every meeting we've had, there's been somebody or a number of people recording it, and rather than have excerpts and synths that show up on social media, I'd rather have it openly out there, so there can be no dis- reinterpretation as to what.
I fully support that idea, I think that, you know, the more the public has accessed what we do here, the more informed they are, I think it was a great job that we do, and the better off the public would be. I would also take that on separate, I think that we should have an entire packet, a PDF packet, should be available to the public on our website. No reason why people have to come here and try to hunt for agenda items, and try to find what the resolutions are, what they say. They should be readily available. I mean, we got it by PDF, why is the public having access to that? It should be available on our website. So, I support the idea that we should televise our meetings, you know, well, not televise, but broadcasting to the internet, and have more of our documentation accessible, especially at this stage where neither is so easy to be uploaded and available on the web. So, great comment. Let's get it done.
Thank you. Jeffrey Brokner, 16 and 11 Terrace, Bridge Water.
I'd like to start just with an observation. It's ironic that something that a rival political campaign has been advocating for and criticizing you about, all of a sudden becomes something you want to do. This was the exact topic of my comment. I'd like to address this council's lack of transparency and accessibility. First, limiting public comment to two minutes is ridiculous. No other town in the area does it. The Board of Ed allows five minutes, twice per meeting. So does the Raritan Borough Council. Hillsborough imposes no time limit. Administrator and Warren give three minutes, twice per meeting. A two-minute time limit makes it feel like those of you up there don't care what those of us back there have to say. Another problem is that the documents identified on the agenda are not made available easily. I'm sure you have the custody on dusty corner of the township building, but why aren't they on the internet and hard, and hard copy at the meetings? The BOE has done that for over a decade. I'm glad to hear that you're talking about doing it now, but it's ridiculous that that only happens because we've been talking about that in our political campaign. Another problem is that you don't record in live stream your meetings. Again, thank you for talking about it now finally, after we've been talking about it publicly. It's really sad, the best the public has is a low-res iPad video recorded from the cavity by concerned residents. Can't Bridge Water do better than this? This lack of transparency has had real consequences in this town. I'll give just two examples. First, in February, I'm sorry, in February of this year, the council approved a land swap. I've heard that the township acquired worthless wetlands, and in exchange, the developer got a buildable plot of land next to Eisenhower School. This may have been a good deal for the township, but it sure doesn't look like it. A bit of transparency would help dispel the appearance of impropriety, and who knows? Transparency might actually prevent real impropriety in this or some future case. Second, in January 2016, the council heard a presentation about a CLE project. Unless you were at that meeting, or knew someone who was, you would have had no idea that the council would be voting just one month later to greenlight the largest project in Bridge Water since the fall. Word must have leaked out, because 20 residents did speak at that meeting, most against the project. But this pales in comparison to the hundreds, if not thousands, of people who were now up in arms about what the council has already approved. It's too late. It would have been nicer for those residents who have had a fair opportunity to be heard before the critical decision was made by this council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brokner, your statements, although are passionate and. I'm sorry, hold on, I can't hear you. Very interesting, but so inaccurate this council has addressed issues regarding transparency in the past. This is like one of your first or second times attending these meetings, but if you had come here more often, you would have known that we have addressed some of these issues, and there have been reasons, there have been discussions about this. For starters, I've been.
For starters, I've been at probably twenty of these meetings over the last two years. I'm not, they're often the same as the event meetings. I would also comment that you can talk all you want, but if you're not doing it, it doesn't matter.
Okay, we're not going to get into that. Thank you.
Good evening. Hi, Selahap, sixteen Gibson Harris. Find it really interesting that I ran, as he said, come up and talk about filming. You know, he talks a big game about coming up and filming, coming up doing transparency and stuff like that. I don't want to start it, you know, and that's the reason why I started, because, you know what, I got three kids. I can't come here every single time. I have people who come and record it for me because I can't make it here, and this should be a main reason why you should have it, because not just people with families who have now have to hire someone and watch their kids that can come down here, because the transparency in here is pretty poor. And we put the agenda, I mean, it's really hard to figure out exactly what you guys are going on. But beyond that, you know, let's talk about, you know, older people who can't make it here because they don't have a car, or they can't drive anymore. Same thing with young people who are eighteen and don't have a car, they can't get here. This has to be done, and sad that I had to start doing this about, what, four months ago, three, four months ago, for its finding, thinking to you guys, and I guess I wanted to win credit. I'm glad that I finally said no, because it finally is going though, you guys, that that's what the public wants, so, thanks.
Thank you. And for the public?
Happy, hello, Franco, seven six six, we're in my way. I have a couple of issues. First is back in January, January seventeen, there was a resolution to establish and advise the ad hoc committee to, for the township, three ad hoc committees to be designated as a liability issues, developing infrastructure, community outreach, and engagement. These will exist until December thirty first of this year, at which time they will cease and must be reinstated by another resolution. I was wondering if these three ad hoc committees were formed, whether or not a report has been provided to the town council at large, and if those committee reports will be made available to others. You can answer my question, and if I finish anything, it'll be a lot. My second question has to do with Camp Cromwell. Camp Cromwell, let's see again, on tonight's agenda, we are adding an additional forty-two thousand dollars to a ordinance that had already passed, one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, bringing that to one hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars for demolition of certain structures. In addition, back in, I believe it was August, forty-nine thousand dollars was proved to the Morris Falls. Also, there is another ordinance being proposed tonight, a resolution for an additional thousand dollars for phase two of demolition. I was wondering, do we have a report on Camp Cromwell as to how much more money will be invested by this township before it will be open to the public to be able to utilize and enjoy? It is open space, it is public area, it is supposed to be green land, it's just down the street from many of us, and I'd like to be able to go there. And my daughter would like to be able to run now, as opposed to on the county roads, the cabinet sidewalk, the Tornok Bay, which are posted twenty-five or thirty-five miles an hour, but we all know everybody does a lot faster than. That was my second. My third is pay to plug. Pay to plug, a bound's held. If you get that money, that's wonderful, I was wondering where those pay to plug units will be set up in this township? Whether or not those will be free to the residents, or whether or not there will be a charge for residents to be able to utilize the electricity that allows them to plug in their electric car? And if there is a charge, what kind of charge are we going to put on those residents? Or if there isn't going to be a charge, how much does the township anticipate that would cost the township? My final issue has to do with transparency, which Mr. Ring brought up, and Mr. Brokner brought up, and as somebody who has asked at big meetings on a regular basis, that I don't have a budget, I don't have the resolution for the changes that are being offered, how can I go about getting them? And the answer that I've gotten is, I can live at the county clerk during normal business hours, or Mr. McNabbas actually has been very gracious at every meeting I've been to, and he's handed me his copy, and I brought it back to him at the next meeting, so that I would have access. But please, do not project as a town council that you have been thinking about transparency, when that is the response that I've gotten to every request I've made for information, is that I have to come during normal business hours to access that information. That is all I have to say. And yes, please, I am a family board member's wife, but I am so much more than that, because I'm an educated professional, a licensed political social, a licensed nursing administrator, certified assistant living administrator, and EMP. And I'm sorry, one more, hang on, Mr. Rench, you brought up the issue of people getting all up ahead on Facebook about the quarry blasts. Well, for your information, at ten thirty-seven, the blast was dispatched through Somerset County to an emergency management service. At eleven nineteen, Bridgewater Police Department posted that it was a normal blasting to a mixed holder to anybody who was behind them. At four ninety, you posted on social media, and that was the first post I saw, which said, oh, the quarry blast, I'm looking into it. So, in social media, if we want to restrict that, you are the suggested council members that you don't invite masses. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the public, we should come forward to the council. Do you have a motion to close? Motion to close, public. Go second. All favor? Alright. Okay, we have no public hearing, no final action orders tonight, no charge of ordinances. We have resolution twelve A, providing the insertion of special item of revenue to twenty nineteen budget, so in danger, I say, four year, seven, municipal aid cannot country club, five, thirty-five thousand dollars. Do we actually, I guess we can probably do twelve A through twelve D, let's do those as groups, providing the insertion of special item of revenue, budget for the clean communities, grant under three thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars, provide for the, twelve C, providing special item of revenue for twenty nineteen budget, so you don't have to pay the plug, twelve thousand dollars, provision of electric car charging stations, twelve D, providing the insertion of special item of revenue for twenty nineteen budget, so in danger, I say, forty-eight, forty-seven, for both group vests, seven thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars. We have the.
My manager, in reference to Mrs. Franco's question on the plug, I think Mr. Naples several months ago, when he applied for this grant, said we were going to install two stations, and initially, we knew there would not be charge, but at some point, it would be through a private project.
There's going to be one in a library and one in municipal building, and each station will have two plugs, so it's two plugs in the library and two in the.
So, that means four.
Four cars.
Okay. That's your answer, Mr. Franco. Thank you.
Who's going to pay for the electricity?
Do you offer the color until they, like, try to come up?
We know it's possibility.
I think we have the time we did the grant, we got an estimate, and that's part of the process in terms of looking at moving forward when, if township decides to start charging, if it falls to be based on future.
I don't have, wait, I don't have, did I miss, I don't have numbers. I don't have the.
No, this is for, this is for, we've already applied for and received the grant. This is to accept the grant money we've already received. So, several months ago, the township council, president administration, applied for the grant, we now got the grant, so this is for us to accept the money that we won't pay that's for. That's what all the items twelve A through twelve D are.
Again, I, I, look, I agree in concept, I think it's a relative, it's a good thing, although electricity consumes thousands of fuels and produces carbon emissions, but we, I mean, to install four electrical charging.
Two times two, like the.
Two stations, and each station has two.
So, it's four charging areas without, I mean, I don't have the cost, what are going to be, what are those costs going to be to the town? I mean.
What will be, will be charged, we have the.
Off on the way? Is there a plan?
Well, that's the key word.
If you want to hold it, we can, we can put it off for one meeting, and get the official information table back.
I'd rather move it and then get the information, I mean, it is a grant, so we've already applied for it, I don't want some kids to get involved here where we don't accept it right now and lose one. The, the issue of electric car charging is a big deal, not only in the township, but in the county and state, and we should give force to it by turning down the grant, to affect in this case for those.
The township, you don't think.
If you don't want to turn it on, that's a different thing. Say, okay, go on, install the station, but, but do not energize it until the future council action, that's fine, but I don't want to turn down.
The township, you don't think.
I know that we're moving forward, and I don't know if there's a deadline to complete, but I know people are working on actually researching and purchasing and ordering the items, so I need to apply, I mean, budget in order to pay it. We didn't.
Well, hold on, let's, let's do, do it this way. Let's have a motion on item twelve, uh, item twelve A. Okay, roll call, please.
Catherine Hiersa?
Yes.
Catherine Monroe, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, motion on twelve B, item of special, item of revenue, so it's huge.
So.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Catherine Hiersa?
Oh, yes, I think overall, the program has a positive benefit to, to what we're trying to accomplish in the township, but we need to have a plan, how would I pay for it? So, I would strongly encourage someone to forward to me something. Oh, wait, am I the one?
Oh, yes, okay, sorry, yes.
Catherine Monroe, yes. My friend, my dad?
Yes.
Yes. Resolution twelve C, providing a special item of revenue for the electric car charging station.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Catherine Hiersa?
Yeah, yes, I already have my statements in front here, resolution.
Catherine Monroe, yes, my friend, my dad?
Yes.
Yes. Twelve D, providing the insertion of special item of revenue for both group vests.
Twelve D.
Roll call, please.
Catherine Hiersa?
Yes.
Catherine Monroe, yes, my friend, my dad?
Yes.
Yes. Twelve A, authorized release performance guarantee, acceptance of site improvements, acceptance of the maintenance guarantee for Washington Valley Estates LLC, twenty-one forty-one Washington Valley Road. Do you have any?
Okay, very straightforward. Twelve E.
You have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Catherine Hiersa?
Yes.
Catherine Monroe, yes, my friend, my dad?
Yes.
Yes. Twelve F, authorized release performance guarantee, acceptance of site improvements, waiver, waiver, waiver of the maintenance guarantee for, I might not try to say it, affiliates on six eighty-five, Route two hundred and two hundred and six.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Catherine Hiersa?
Which property is it? The. Yeah, I, I, I mean, I see the name, but it's like, but it won't be a common name for this, what, what property is it?
Okay.
We have to take a look at it. Accepting site improvements, I don't know which property it's in.
It is.
It's the building just south of the Audi dealership, one block south. It's an office building.
Thank you, Mr. Brokner. Thank you.
It's a billion plus in how the maintenance guarantee goes to be awarded, so.
I found it on the roadmap.
There are so many.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Monroe, yes, my friend, my dad?
Yes.
Yes. Twelve G, authorized change order one, final increase, the original contract price from one thirty-two to one seventy, one hundred thirty thousand three hundred, one hundred and forty thousand nine hundred and fifty-five, which is an increase of thirty-two point two four percent, forty thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars, the original contract amount of the Wild Park Initiative LLC, the demolition structure at Camp Cromwell, we funded through the open space. The township, you have anything that, we had questions regarding the change order?
I just, this is just the balance of the original bid that we need to approve in order to pay the contractor for the work actually done. There is no more funds of the contractor, the next one has a resolution for the phase two on the state agenda.
My understanding is that is.
I'd like to read a paragraph.
Yeah, the same.
The title is, a bid document included three hundred and twenty tons of glass thirteen C debris, evenly split between non-concrete and concrete brick, the value is divided on a preliminary estimate provided to the township by an outside estimator that qualified the number of expected dumpsters, which would be converted to find the bid, the preliminary estimate was for total thirty-four tons. Mr. Taggady has said, in future, I believe your changing of the method, I would like to clarify that.
Sure.
So, the, the phase two bid that I have is not a complete bid, is a long-suffered bid, so that's a hundred thousand dollar or whatever, that is for, so that's all thirteen remaining.
I never like to see a bid more than ten percent over the period, but speaking with us, we have, we were required by law to read the process.
Okay, any further questions, I'm still chief.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Catherine Hiersa?
Yes.
Catherine Monroe, yes, my friend, my dad?
Yes.
President.
Yes. Twelve H, authorized grant money amount of five thousand dollars to the Alton, designing a three king court lot, one oh five, lot five thirty point one, River, New Jersey, in accordance with the township, river township condominium to assistance program for affordable housing units, chapter one twenty-six, section three twenty-one point four two. Proceeding to the.
Second.
Okay.
I would not hold up approval of this one, but I'd like to complete any of the calls we've spoken.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Catherine Hiersa?
Yes.
Catherine Monroe, yes, my friend, my dad?
Yes.
Yes. Twelve H, authorized grant money amount of five thousand dollars to the Alton, designing a three king court lot, one oh five, lot five thirty point one, River, New Jersey, in accordance with the township, river township condominium to assistance program for affordable housing units, chapter one twenty-six, section three twenty-one point four two. Proceeding to the.
Second.
Okay.
I would not hold up approval of this one, but I'd like to complete any of the calls we've spoken.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Catherine Hiersa?
Yes.
Catherine Monroe, yes, my friend, my dad?
Yes.
Yes. Twelve Y, awarded twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, summer home services, J and K tree service, LLC, sixteen stone, River Road, France, River, New Jersey, the amount is seventy-five thousand. Okay.
The conference is our annual.
The CRO survey edition, ones divided by package.
There's, the law authorizes us to put that counterpart inside the resolution, and it's satisfied, it's scheduled, there's no one, so.
So, that's, that's where it is, that's certain.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Twelve Y.
Roll call, please.
Catherine Hiersa?
Yes.
Catherine Monroe, yes, my friend, my dad?
Yes.
President.
Yes. Resolution twelve J, awarded contract to TR Wininger Inc., nineteen hundred, Brundrich Avenue, Escalade, New Jersey, for the Camp Cromwell structure demolition two, and some of hundred thousand dollars funded through the open space. The township.
This, this is just a fashion, this one is the lump sum bid, so there is no financial issue.
Can, Mr. Taggady, or?
Mr. Taggady has assured me that this represents the final thing for demolition facilities on that site, and we inherited a lot of generosity from the county, it was nice, but we got to finish off.
Um, Mr. Taggady, is there any timeline? We've been asking the mayor for quite some time for a more definitive timeline on Camp Cromwell, or Mr. Rench comments on that?
They're expecting, all demolition to be completed before the end of this year. We're obviously in progress already at that, as far as how to get the rest of the camp running, something that'll be scheduled for next year, I know they're already building a trail up there, but we don't have, I don't have a definitive schedule provided to you tonight, other than demolition will be done by the end of the year. But we don't have, I don't have a definitive schedule provided to you tonight, other than demolition will be done by the end of the year.
Your right, Daniel. In the health department, annual reports that walking trail will be open by the end of this year.
Okay.
And I think we probably need an update on that, because it's something that could be a target reach for many months.
I know, I know the walking trail was under construction, problem you have now is we have a lot of demolition going on up there, it's really unsafe. So why don't you say?
Yes, I'll remind you.
I have noted people walking around up there, actually a couple weeks ago, I ran into people who were on staff there in the sixties. They were wandering.
Yeah. And I just, I don't want people who are attorneys to have a heart attack.
I acknowledge that, you know, it's a dangerous site, and so on and so forth, but unfortunately, it is pedestrian accessible, so.
I'll.
Second.
Yes, council reminds me that anybody walking on Camp Cromwell right now is technically trespassing, so bear that in mind. We had a motion, a second on twelve J.
Yes.
Roll call.
Captain Gilson?
Yes.
Captain Monroe, yes, President McGaddis?
Yes.
President McGaddis?
Yes. Twelve K is extending hours of waiting, I'd like to table this. Do we have a call, council?
Okay.
Okay. Do we have a, do we have a motion to table? Okay. So we don't, we don't have a second to table, okay, so does anybody have a motion on twelve K?
So.
So, all right, twelve K, allies.
First, mentioning to the public, this is a document where a number of liquor dispensers are asking for approval to sell from nine o'clock to eleven o'clock on Sunday, November twenty-fourth, Sunday, December twenty-second, and Sunday, December twenty-ninth. Thanksgiving is on the twenty-eighth of November, that's Thursday. They're asking approval to be able to sell Sunday before, that's from four, from five, from six, from seven, and twenty-eighth, and saying that if they can't get approval to dispense additional liquor on those grounds, it's going to be disenterting, disenterting this to their business. I don't believe, I will vote on this.
Well, there's no, there's no motion to approve, so there's no action today. Nobody has.
Did you second?
No.
Well, I think I was second.
Well, you're going to second, you're going to second the motion to table.
Not going to second, not going to second.
So council, 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 uh, you made a motion to table.
Right, that's a, that didn't move.
I do not want.
I agree, so, okay, I see what you're trying to do.
Right. So, so far, nobody has made a motion to move this item.
There is a motion.
So if you want to make a motion to move it, you can make a motion, but nobody has made a motion to move this.
I made a motion to move this.
Is there a second? Okay, there's no motion, we're moving along. Item twelve A.
Just for the background, I don't support this. I never have, every year they come before us, ask me for this, and every year I say that, I don't see a reason why they need to extend the.
I have moved it, every time this is done, and I've walked it through, now it's fine. But it goes, it'll be back next year for two weeks from now, when there is a more robust council proceeding.
The resolution twelve L, amending the Somerset Regional Animal Shelter contract to attachment Bridgeport, Mandamill. This is back up, we've had a few changes specifically to allow us to put an alternate on the board. Captain Monroe, do you have any additional comments on the animal shelter?
No, I'm just glad to see it on the agenda for action.
Thank you, and I see our board president sitting patiently in the back. Nicole, thank you for all the work that you do on behalf of the shelter, really appreciate it, and we'll hopefully get you some assistance.
I have one question I raised a couple of weeks ago. What is our procedure for the disposal of dead animals up to two hundred pounds? Does anybody know the answer?
You know that, Nicole?
I don't know, I can find out.
Well, it's, the thing that's vexing to me is this says the organization agrees to accept all dead animals weighing less than a hundred pounds delivered to a shelter by the parties, but not for any person who receives compensation from dealing with performance, et cetera. So I just want to know that people aren't going to be probably dead here off right now in the block here from the municipal at two o'clock in the morning, and somebody's got to, there's got to be a plan for it. It says in the contract that they're going to accept it, I want to know what they're going to do with it. And I don't think the answer will.
I'm sure Nicole will report back to us.
Well, I don't know, I've probably been asked by everyone in the town before.
I'm a lot.
Maybe, maybe not yet.
I'm pretty sure it's still, it's the same language that's in there now, I believe.
Well, it is, in the procedure before, I'm still on the.
Okay, you have a motion?
I'd like to move it.
All right, your second on twelve L? Second, roll call, please.
Captain Gilson?
Yes.
Captain Monroe, yes. President McGaddis?
Yes.
President McGaddis?
Yes.
Can I get an answer for that, for that?
Twelve M, request for waiver card permit fee amount of six dollars for Pioneer Family Success Center, thirty-four West Link Street Street, two oh one Summer Hill, New Jersey, connection to the family campfire, Bridgeport YMCA, at six oh one Garrett Square, Bridgeport, on Thursday, September nineteenth. I guess at this point, the credo actively funding, is it funding their way?
I'll move twelve F.
How do they do with the restrictions?
They do, yeah.
What's the restrictions of?
Well, the restrictions only went in the past week, this previous year.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Captain Gilson?
Yes.
Captain Monroe, yes, President McGaddis?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we have a vote session tonight, discuss litigation.
So.
Resolution should be resolved by the Bridgeport Township Council, this body will now hold a closing, discuss litigation, what if matters discussed become public record? We can never public at that time. Folks, execute this meeting and further determine their own respect with all your consent to meet before any open public meetings act. We will not take action upon coming out of a vote session other than to adjourn the meeting. You're welcome to stick around, but we're not going to take any further action other than you vote. Vote, it will be a short vote session. All in favor?